It's green, so I don't know.
Please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Hello, welcome everyone. So good to see a full crowd tonight. This is our city council meeting for November 4th, 2024. We begin every meeting with an open comment period. This is a chance for anyone who would like to speak on issues. My computer just turned off. On issues that we will not be taking public testimony on later in a public hearing. And you have up to two minutes to speak for a total of up to 20 minutes. I will be keeping track of time as you move through your presentation with a little stop clock here and a stop timer on the wall. Just know that if I cut you off, it's not because I don't want to hear what you have to say, but it's because we want to make sure that others have a chance to speak as well. I will use the list that the city clerk has given me, although I only have a few names. So if there are others who didn't have a chance to sign up, I will be sure to ask after those have spoken. If you have any materials to share with the council, we ask that you hand those to the city clerk who is over here. She will make sure that we get that information. And similarly, if you would like us to follow up with you on any comments or questions you have, we don't respond in real time, but you can make sure that the clerk has your contact information and staff or council will follow up with you. We encourage you to limit your comments to topics that council actually has ability to influence policy over, but we certainly welcome your comments and feedback to staff and ask that you deliver those respectfully and to me as the presiding officer over the meeting. I will go ahead and start based on the list I have here, and we ask that you step up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and then you have two minutes. So Mike Broughton is first.
Thank you, Council President Carlson.
The mic needs to be turned on.
All right. How's that?
Good.
Thank you, Council President Carlson. Thank you, Mayor Norton and City Administrator Zelms and the leaders of the six wards. All right. Hey, I came here to speak basically because I just graduated with my industrial engineering degree with honors, and I have a few other industrial engineering degrees. And I've been in the area for a few months and have had limited success on employment opportunities. I've applied to multiple organizations within Rochester and Olmsted County. It seems like there is an appetite for some industrial engineers with certain qualifications. I'm unemployed and moving motel to motel in your, in your county as an industrial engineer with tens of thousands of dollars in student loan debt. And I, I'm trying, I'm struggling to understand why there's such a lack of positions for technical professionals in the industrial engineering arena, which by the way, industrial engineers are found all over industry at all, all levels above and below. And you should know that. I challenge you to look at your executive makeup in your area to include your county and city officials and other businesses that are well known in the area and assess the, the placement of industrial engineers and the area's desire to achieve more efficient efficiency in terms of engineering and technical professionals in the area, such as myself. I've had very limited success in securing employment for my profession. And then I, it would seem like someone in this arena would be welcome in, in this area. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
All right, Adam Busby.
Hi, my name is Adam Busby, ATU 1005. I'm speaking for our drivers. Many are here to, here today. And though I've been called special interest, these are your constituents. They live in your wards and they do city work. Two stories of what we've had to endure just this year working for TransDev. One of our drivers has some medical issues that prevented him from, from working. TransDev refused to give the information to MetLife so he could get his short-term disability when he was off for quite some time with no pay till he had to walk away from the job. I was injured in 2017. In, first transit refused to install a part on the suspension of the bus because it was an expensive part. It was $900. But because they didn't want to spend that much, I will now live injured with the rest of my, for the rest of my life. And then to add to that, this year, TransDev started repa- refusing to pay for three of my meds that I've been on, some of them since 2017. The side effects of going off one of these medications was horrific because I couldn't afford it. This is why I'm asking the city to bring us in-house to, to dispute the notion there are not grants for federal funds for city-run transit is fictitious and fear-mongering. Cities around the UF have proven it. Also, the idea to take just the mechanics in-house, I think, is a horrible idea. As you remember, just this year, there was an email sent to you all and to staff that reads apart. City transit personnel will not be engaging in further communication with Mr. Busby. I'm a dispatcher. Dispatchers work closely, closely with our mechanics. Without that communication, there is a real possibility of disruption of service. So I ask of you, please take us all or leave us all. The only difference between taking just the mechanics or taking us all is staff wants one and not the other. I have a question. Where, anywhere in the world is it more expensive to cut out the middleman? It doesn't make sense. If it doesn't make sense, it's usually not. Also, if it's cheaper, maybe we should sub out the police fire department as well. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Busby. Adri Gomez. Or Adri, I'm sorry.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Norton. My name is Adri Gomez, dispatcher for Rochester Public Transit. Today is the day. Will you do the right thing? Today is the day that you will execute your power in local governance by taking our Rochester Public Transit system away from the hands of a French private-for-profit self-contracted company. Today is the day you can eliminate the hundreds of thousands of dollars, taxpayer dollars, that are being sent to TransDev headquarters in France. Today is the day you decide to say no more paying a French private company a profit percentage every month to manage our transit public system, your transit public system. See, today is the day you can leave a legacy, change history, ensuring stability, well-being, and peace for the employees that are the backbone for the transit services. Because see, tonight, the entire city of Rochester will be watching each and every one of you and your decisions. Will you do the right thing? Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Good Miss Gomez. And then I have Monica, and I can't read the last name, but welcome you up to introduce yourself. Thank you for being here. You have two minutes when you're ready.
Hi, I'm Monica Rose. I'm here on behalf of my father, Harold Carlson. He was, he lived on Seventh Avenue Northwest. I was here last April 22nd, only eighty-eight years old. He died two days later. Knowing that this stuff was going to be happening. Anyway, I'm just really concerned that this thing went through as an improvement. It's not improvement, it's a maintenance issue. I asked the appraiser, which we had done like early May, if this is going to improve his property by the $9,000 that you guys are going to charge him, or charge my dad's account. And he said, that's a big fat lie. There's no way this is going to make one bit of difference to the buyer. So that's a falsehood right there. Another thing, his assessment went from, it went up $35,000 from 2023 to this year. Next year is going down by $10,000. I don't understand that. And it's the, this is the highest assessed property on their block. It makes no sense to me whatsoever. Now, the barricades were just taken down today, so the road is done. It's more narrow and it's more dangerous. Cars are parking both sides of the street. You can't maneuver through there without stopping, letting the other car by. Once the bus starts going down there, it's going to be horrible. People are still speeding. They're slowing down to get around the little bump outs, but then they're tearing down in the next corner. It's not an improvement. It was a major issue, and it's just awful that this had to happen to begin with. That you should do like the sidewalk assessment, spread it through the whole city, same street assessment, same thing. Pay, make everyone pay. They're not the only ones using this street. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Well, that is who I have signed up. Was there anybody else who didn't have a chance to sign up who would like to speak tonight? All right, we will close the open comment and officially call the meeting to order. Clerk Geisler, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
All right, thank you, everyone. I will turn it over to our city administrator, Allison Zelms, for her report. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Council members, we start this report each time thanking our teammates for their customer service and acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence at all times. So thanks to our teammates who are out in the field and in our city offices, always acting in that way, whatever they do. Also did want to let you know, and glad we have a lot of drivers here today, that the Rochester Public Transit is offering free rides tomorrow on Election Day. So if you let your driver know that you're going to be casting a vote, you will be able to ride transit for free to any of those polling locations. Well, pick the polling location you're supposed to be at. And polling places are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and those free rides will be available from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So one hour before and one hour after the polls open and close. So thank you for providing that important service. Also, I wanted to acknowledge that we were, finally, after many, many years of planning, awarded the federal funds for the Link Bus Rapid Transit project. So that is to build the project. That is almost $85 million in federal support that will join other local dollars, including partially a match from the Destination Medical Center partnership that we have. And just to thank our delegation for continuing to support us in moving forward with that project. Very exciting. A lot of work went into that by a lot of teammates. Also, a couple of fun things happening at the library. So tomorrow, in between voting, you can stop by the, by the Rochester Public Library from 10:30 to 11:30 AM or 2:30 to 3:30 PM. There is a kind of Legathon going on. So you can build different types of vehicles with Legos at the library. And then this coming Thursday evening, 6:30 to 7:30 PM, there is an adult feel-good fiction book group that is starting to meet at the library. So you can find that at Rochester Public Library. That's all I have today.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Zelms. Mayor?
Thank you. I do have a couple of things, and I'm going to start with a proclamation. I haven't read one for a long time, so bear with me. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas, we firmly believe that the values of compassion, empathy, and community support are the foundation for a united and harmonious society, fostering connections that transcend differences. And whereas, the strength and prosperity of our cities, towns, and villages are based in the selflessness of its residents to serve and uplift one another. And whereas, we acknowledge the profound impact that can be achieved when we extend a helping hand to our neighbors, especially those of diverse backgrounds, living, like, holding them up and collectively working to improve lives. And whereas, we nurture a culture of giving within our cities, emphasizing that volunteerism is not just a duty, but a source of personal fulfillment and community strength. And as we work side by side with and learn from each other, mutual understanding increases, misconceptions can be corrected, and new friendships are built. And whereas, we urge all citizens to care for one another, volunteer, and engage in acts of service and kindness that contribute to our city's betterment and our citizens' well-being regardless of background or belief. And whereas, the city of Rochester has joined a growing list of supporters, including the president of the National League of Cities and hundreds of leaders to date, in making a commitment to volunteerism. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kim Norton, mayor of the city of Rochester, do hereby commit to promoting volunteerism, leveraging JustServe.org to make it easier for residents to find and engage in volunteer opportunities, and will regularly acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of our volunteers. In witness whereof, I have entered and set my hand and caused the corporate seal of the city of Rochester to be affixed this fourth day of November 2024. And JustServe.org is a new way that the city and many organizations in the community will be posting volunteer opportunities, and it will be easy for folks to just go out there and see what's available and sign up to no cost, offering for our community, and the city of Rochester will participate. So, maybe this'll work. Let me try the on button. I got it, I got it. We do have a few board and commission vacancies. At the end of every year, you may remember that we get to this point, and people who are currently serving on our boards and commissions have reached the limit of their opportunity to be able to serve. You're able to serve for two terms, possibly two terms and a partial third, but at some point, we have to say, thank you very much for your service. We do definitely offer their thanks, but then they have to move on and it's time to replace. And this happens every year. It's a lot of work for the next month or two to get this all ready for the first of the year, but we do have these openings. Board of Appeals has two openings. The Citizens Advisory on Transit has two openings. Heritage Preservation Commission has two openings, and then the rest have one opening. The Library Board, the Music Board, the Pet and Bike Advisory Committee, the Public, Public Utility Board, and the Sustainability and Resiliency Committee will each have one opening. And sometimes they're because someone has moved out of town as well, but this is the busiest time of year for us to fill these positions. So if you have an interest in any of these areas, please go to the city's website to boards and commissions, and you can sign up to serve on one of those boards. And we're very appreciative. Secondly, the International Relations Committee has been busy. Last year, we tried having an exchange to our sister cities in Germany. We were told from, particularly from the German committee that meets in town, that we didn't give them enough notice. So they have asked us to delay that for a year. So we end up with two this year. So we have one, September 12th through 20th. And then the sister city, Akita, in Japan, is August 6th to 16th. There are pamphlets up in the mayor's office, and folks may want to consider doing some fund-raising. These are private-paid trips to visit our sister cities in these areas, and we take gifts, and we'll meet with the mayor as well as get to know the community that folks, that are the, the sister city, and we'll get to know the folks that live there. So an opportunity for the coming year. Lastly, Rochester Vision 2050 continues. We are wrapping up this fall. We had our big push in October. I did a, a letter to the editor on the Saturday paper. We've had some responses since that, since then. And I would just encourage you all to go, again, the, the webpage, the city's webpage has a mayor's page, and there's a place at the very top that says survey, and it's really not a survey per se, it's a, an input. And we want you to tell us what would make Rochester a better place to live. And we've got well over 1,500 people that have already put their suggestions in, and thousands of suggestions have come from those 1,500 people. But we want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to do that before we close out the year. And lastly, I'm not going to read the other proclamation. There was supposed to be an event this afternoon at 5:00 where I was going to read the proclamation for Entrepreneurship Week. I won't read it. They just couldn't pull it off today, so they canceled it. But I do want to mention that this is November 4th through 8th. It's Entrepreneurship Week. It's something we've been working on, particularly inclusive entrepreneurship here in the city. And there have been some really wonderful Collider and Ready, and many other organizations have been working together to, to make sure that we have a strong entrepreneurship environment. And so we'll be celebrating that as well. So that's it for my report, and thank you for the time.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering for, from staff, is there any way to get a couple extra chairs in back? I feel bad for people who are needing to stand when I think they're waiting for an item that's later in the agenda. Able to share, give up your seat so others can sit, please consider doing that.
Council President, as soon as we get through this initial part of the agenda here, I'll get some more chairs.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for your patience as you stand and wait for the items you're interested in. All right. So we'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there, is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Keen, any discussion?
No, nothing to add.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Dennis is pulling F4 and 6. These will be discussed under reports and recommendations. I would invite a motion to approve and block items F1 through 3.
Council President, just clarification. I did pull F11 as well, but I wanted to, that you know, that I've researched to make sure that, you know, that no taxpayer dollars were going to be used. And there was several other things that were not mentioned in the administrator report that was sent out. But I just want to say, I did pull F11, but rescinded that after questions were answered, and noting that taxpayer dollars were not going to be spent. Thank you.
So I'd invite a motion to approve and block F1 through 3, 5, 7 through 16. Second. All right, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
No, again, just we do so much of our business through the consent agenda, but again, it's, it's expedient to get to our public hearings to do it this way. So I appreciate the work the staff does to prepare those for us.
Indeed. I was just double-checking one thing on there. Oh, there is one exciting item on here that is the actual start of a trail we have long sought state funding for. So it's very exciting to see that that project down south, it's called the Willow Creek Trail Extension, is moving forward. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. So we have two public hearings tonight. Just take a quick second to go over our process. We, for each item, staff have a chance to give an introduction before, if there is an applicant, for the applicant or representative to have a, up to 10 minutes to introduce their item. We then open the public hearing. Public have a chance to comment for up to five minutes, and then we, excuse me, five minutes each. I apparently haven't read this in a while. We close the public hearing, and then the applicant has a chance to provide a rebuttal for up to five minutes. There's a chance to ask questions before motion discussion and vote. So the first item, there is an applicant for. It is item G1. It, and it's titled, "The Major Land Subdivision Number CD 2024-026 Platt by Farmland LLC to be known as Hadley Creek 5th." And we have Elliot Mueller here. Where is he? There he is, to introduce this item. Mr. Mueller, go ahead.
Good evening, Council President, Mayor, members of the council. Elliot Mueller, Rochester Community Development. And as the council president had mentioned, I'll be introducing Major Land Subdivision CD 2024-026 Platt by Farmland LLC. The request tonight is to subdivide 17.5 acres into 57 residential lots and one outlot, and the sites located at the terminus of Hadley Creek Drive Northeast and Hadley Hills Drive Northeast. The proposed Major Land Subdivision is consistent with the approved general development plan. The applicant has an approved shoreline protection permit, which was approved by the planning commission, nine to zero. And then there's a proposed connection via bridge that will connect County Road 124 or 48th Street with Hadley Hills Drive. And that will require a floodplain development permit, which the applicant is, is aware of, and they'll be applying for that once they make it through this entitlement process. And then the planning commission forwarded a recommendation of approval, nine to zero, with nine conditions.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Would the applicant or representative like to speak? Come on up. And thank you to staff for pulling in some extra chairs. So please introduce yourself. You have 10 minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Council President, members of the council. My name is Craig Britton. I'm a civil engineer with Woodseth here, representing the owner and developer of the project. My address is 3777 40th Avenue Northwest, Rochester. So I don't have a lot to add from Mr. Mueller's presentation there or introduction of the project. We have reviewed the nine conditions that staff has placed on the approval and are in agreement with them. One item I would like to highlight though is condition three. We are currently working with staff to come up with a solution to satisfy that, that condition as far as that Lot 1, Block 1, and the outlot. So we're working through that right now and here to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. We'll get back to you after the public hearing.
Thank you.
So I will open the public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up ahead of time. Would anyone like to speak on this item G1? Otherwise, I will close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if there are any questions of staff or the applicant. Councilmember Palmer.
I have a question for the applicant.
Sorry, we should have kept you up here.
But Hadley Hills Drive has been, has been at the max that it can for vehicles. So you're going to be putting in a bridge. So I'm assuming the bridge would be the first thing built?
It would be in, built in conjunction with some of the grading and utility work that would go in. But yes, yeah, that will be built, one of the, one of the first items that would be constructed, yes.
Okay. How, how, how much, I mean, whereabouts in the planning is that going to be? Because the, having trucks and vehicles driving down the road on Hadley Hills Drive doesn't make much sense to the neighbors already. And I would prefer to have the, the exit be on 48th Street and have construction traffic coming in there.
Sure. Yeah, that's one thing we can look at. As we look at the staging of that, we did look at a temporary access across the creek there as well. So that could be used for truck traffic and the majority of the construction vehicles. But it'll take a while for that construction of that bridge to be finalized. So, so I don't think that that, just based on timing, that that bridge would be open for all construction traffic through the subdivision.
So you would, you'd be okay if, you're going to build a temporary bridge? Is that what you're saying? Or temporary crossing?
Temporary crossing, yes. It would not be a span bridge or anything like that, but yes.
And, and so then your traffic would then exit onto 48th Street?
Yep. Some of the construction traffic, like I said, Councilmember, we, we will have to look at the sequencing and phasing of the, of the construction. But like I said, it'll take some time for that bridge to be constructed, so.
So, but if you had a temporary bridge or access across the waterway, then, then that traffic, construction traffic could use that instead of using the temporary road already?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that all the construction traffic would be able to be used, use that crossing, just because of the, some of the deliveries of the materials and that. I just, with the loading, I don't know that that would be suitable to have some of that, the materials delivered over that temporary crossing. It would meet mainly for that construction of the bridge, possibly concrete trucks and things of that nature.
And you understand my concern that we have construction running down a residential area that's at almost maximum, max number of, of traffic right now?
Yep. Yep. Yep, I do. Yep. And we would look to minimize that amount of construction traffic through the development as much as we could.
And how would one do that?
By having that temporary access and utilizing that as much as possible for the construction traffic.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm hearing about construction traffic, but I, I want to just establish, this is the city street that's going in, that's going to be built to, to the full standards, and it's going to be the second way in and out of this, this neighborhood? I'm not sure if that's the, yeah, Elliot?
Yes, to my knowledge. I would say it's going to be a public street unless otherwise down the process.
Go ahead. Do you want to weigh in, public, just?
Good evening, Mayor, President, members of the council. Yes, this will be a public roadway that, when finished, the city will take over ownership and maintenance of it.
And, and that will be at a standard. I'm hearing this stuff about like temporary bridge and all that, but it'll be a real city street that's, that'll be built to standards to handle in and out traffic of what's probably 170 residents by the time this is done?
Yes, it's, it will meet all of our engineering standards and guidelines.
And help me out again, is that being done as part of this project, or is that a separate project that we're going to see separately?
This will all be one project. It'll be a city owner contract like you see on any other subdivision.
Okay. All right. And again, you're, you're aware that that's how we're building this, this road?
Correct. Yep, that's right. Yep, that is the intent, to have that be a public access all the way down to 48th Street. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving Major Land Subdivision Number CD 2024-026 Platt by Farmland LLC to be known as Hadley Creek 5th, with nine conditions for the subdivision of 17.5 acres of land into 57 residential lots and one outlot.
Second.
Councilmember Keen, you have the floor?
Yeah, again, this is, Councilmember Palmer points out- Yeah, again, this is, Councilmember Palmer points out that there's the one road there. And as I understood it, our fire department wouldn't let anything else go in here before we get the city streets in there. So I'm pleased to see this road being built as a full city street, not just a construction road or a temporary access. So that's good to see.
Councilmember Palmer?
I'm going to make an amendment on the motion and I'm going to add condition number 10, that the bridge construction be substantially completed prior to the grading begins or a temporary road be installed prior to grading.
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Palmer?
I was pleased to hear that they're willing to, or they're going to put in a temporary bridge and, or temporary crossing. So going to Forty-Eighth Street, right now, all that construction, all those deliveries going through a residential neighborhood that's about at the max for travel isn't really fair to them. I understand some construction, but I think that this condition number 10 makes it work better for them. And this be a temporary road as they're crossing, as they're building their permanent bridge.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I believe our public hearing is done, but I, before I would want to support this, I understand the idea of keeping that off there, we've done it with other projects. But can somebody from staff kind of, I mean, are we doing something substantially to change the project? Or is this something that makes sense to do? Because I've dealt with this before in other projects and some of them work out and some of them add extensive expense.
Evening, council members. I would say that we'd potentially be influencing some of the phasing that the contractor may utilize on the project. But, you know, if the council sees fit to put this condition on there, I think it's something that the team could accommodate. I would turn to the applicant to make sure. But it seems like their intent is very close to the motion on the table.
Council can make a motion to suspend the rules if you'd like the applicant to respond.
That's what I'd like to do, I'd like to suspend the rules just to get a reading of, before we vote on this, that we understand. I heard the discussion going back and forth about certain weights.
I'll second that.
All right, we need a super majority, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries, so thank you for stepping back up.
Yeah, thank you for the discussion. And again, the intent would be to utilize that temporary crossing. Couple of things we do have to work with the DNR. One, another thing we would be looking for, early grading release, because there is a lot of grading that needs to happen on site. Now, the majority of that material will be moved from the north property, or property to the north, because they do own that parcel as well, to fill in and raise that elevation of that subdivision to bring it to the appropriate grade. So in, with that work taking place, it would not require traffic through the subdivision. So my concern on the timing would be though, that, again, the bridge is going to take a long time to construct. So if there is, again, with that temporary crossing, if we could utilize that to meet the intent of keeping traffic, construction traffic to a minimum through the existing subdivision, we can accomplish that. But I wouldn't be able to say with certainty that we would be able to utilize that in its entirety and not allow any construction traffic through the existing subdivision simply because of weather conditions and that. So I can't say that we'd be fully in agreement with that. But again, we can work with Public Works staff to certainly meet the intent of that construction traffic. And we can do that through a sequencing and phasing plan, so.
Okay, Councilmember Palmer, a follow-up or?
If you're willing to be compromise and work together with Public Works, I think that's the intent of my motion, is to have that. Because I understand that some traffic will have to go, but not a majority of it. And I think that, I think we're in agreement and I think Public Works understands what we're trying to do and.
Okay.
Mr. Keen, are you fine with that?
Just to clarify, could you reread the amendment so I understand it? If it's, just so I understand, it's not, they can start work before this is all done or just, can you reread?
That the bridge construction, and we'll.
Amend it?
amend a little bit that the temporary bridge construction be substantially completed prior to the grading begins.
Okay, that's your understanding too?
It is, only that, again, the grading, in order to get some of their equipment in there to move the material, they would have to come through the subdivision. But we're looking to move with like off-road, off-road trucks and scrapers in that. And that, obviously, that truck traffic would not be heading through the subdivision. So if we could mobilize and get the equipment there, then that equipment that's there can move that material if we can get an early grading release on the majority of that subdivision. So, but I see your point about not wanting a lot of traffic through the subdivision. So I think we can, we can meet that intent and working.
And I think what you're saying to me is that you want, you have to be able to bridge, build a bridge, you're going to have to have construction come through the road.
Correct.
I understand that. And I think that's the intent. And I think working with Public Works is, I think you all can work together.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I want to support this, but at the same time, I want to make sure we don't create some sort of impediment to getting started. So I like Councilmember Palmer's words about the intent here is to keep things off there as much as possible without becoming a roadblock. And if I understand it that way, I'll support it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Questions for the applicant? Ms. Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. In your phone. I heard you mention that DNR approval needs to be happening. When, when will they be coming in to chime in on this?
Yep, we have been working with DNR staff on the bridge crossing itself and also through the wetland replacement and impacts there as well. So they've been engaged for quite some time and they're reviewing our hydraulic model right now on the bridge crossing.
So I'm assuming, maybe incorrectly, but these are all going to be slab-on-grade homes then?
Nope, nope.
Those are the ones closest to the?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right.
The ones outside of the floodplain will have full basements, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any final questions for the applicant? All right, thank you so much for coming back up. All right, so we will go back to the proposed amendment. So Councilmember Keen and Palmer, do you feel like the wording that you have proposed is what you're hoping it accomplishes based on this conversation with the applicant? Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, and just to ask again, Public Works, do you understand the intent of what we're trying to do and the words match?
We understand the intent, yes, Councilmember Keen.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, any other discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Dennis?
Okay, my only question is, so if the intent, do we need an amendment? If, if we understand this is public, it's been recorded for documentation. I mean, to, you know, amend something at the last minute, I just, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with. So since it's already on record, that's the intent. I don't know if I want to support an amendment just because, you know, everything has been already orchestrated by staff, read by constituents, people have had a time to give input. People now don't have time to put input into amendments. So I'm not going to support the amendment just because I believe that it is now on record for the intent. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment related to the bridge, temporary bridge crossing being substantially completed?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay? All right, motion carries, six one with Councilmember Dennis voting nay. So we're back to the original motion now as amended. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say nay? Motion carries, all right. Moving on to our next public hearing, which is item G two. It's the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan, 2025 Annual Action Plan, and the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. And we have Brent Svenby here to introduce the item. Go ahead when you're ready.
Good evening, Council President Carlson, members of the council, Mayor Norton, Brent Svenby, Community Development. This evening, we are back before you this evening. It was before you guys, since September 23rd, where I asked the council to open the public comment period on the Consolidated Plan, the 2025 Annual Action Plan, and the Impediments to Fair Housing. At the meeting on the 23rd, you did have two individuals speak to the council and provide a public comment. Those comments will be taken and summarized and they will be attached as a attachment to the Consolidated Plan when that plan is submitted to HUD, anticipating sometime next spring. We can't submit the plans until we get notification of our 2025 funding. We also did receive one comment on the Impediments of Fair Housing document. So we will take those comments, again, summarize those and put those, attach it to, attachment to the plan when that gets submitted to HUD. Basically, my presentation this evening is one that was presented to you on September 23rd. We are here with, in regards to Consolidated Plan, the Annual Action Plan, and the Analysis to Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. The Consolidated Plan is a five-year plan, strategic plan, that kind of spells out how the city is going to spend their CBG dollars. It looks at strategic priorities. Back in June, I brought before the council the strategic priorities that we had developed based on research done by our consultant hired to work on the plan for us based on their engagement with the community and their analysis of other data. Then the Annual Action Plan is a plan that's done every year. That plan really spells out how do we anticipate we will spend our CBG dollars. Again, the action plan before you this evening is for 2025 dollars. And we will not receive notice of those dollars until sometime next spring. And what they won't get those dollars until, it's like this year will be in fall time. Another playing document is the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. This is required by all grantees to produce this document. And then that is submitted to HUD. This is just kind of a cycle of how the Consolidated Plan or how the documents were created. It's determining the needs, setting priorities, documenting our resources, and considering, setting the goals within the Consolidated Plan. We are kind of where that star is in our, in our document. And then once we get our notice of funding, we will submit these documents to HUD. And then we will administer the programs once we receive our funding. And at the end of the year, we always do what's called a CAPER. And that's basically a performance of how we spent our money and outlines how much money we spent and those individuals that we served with our CBG dollars. We are in phase three of the process where we are presenting the final draft of the plan and taking comments. Again, we are asking you to close the public comment period this evening. And then we will incorporate those comments into the final plan documents. This is what I brought before the council back in June. These are the four strategic priorities that are in the plan. One is access to affordable housing, access to public services, non-housing community development, and fairly, furthering fair housing. We are anticipating that we will receive about $672 of CBG funding next year. And then in addition to that, we always plan about $100,000 of program income. Our program incomes comes from our single-family rehab loan program. When we provide a loan for a house, we do a loan agreement with that. And when the property is sold or the person who's no longer living there, those dollars are paid back to us and we put those dollars back into the CBG program. As you can see, we have about 13% of our funding going to public service activities. There is a 15% cap of dollars that can be spent on public services. About 61% of our funding are going to housing rehab types of activities. Twelve and a half percent is going to administration costs and about 13% for infrastructure types of cost. Based on the strategic priorities and the applications that we opened up for earlier this year, I brought this to the council back in August. This is the recommended allocations of the 2025 dollars. As you can see, there's a number of public service activities. And these were services that applied for funding when we opened up the comment period back in June and July timeframe. And then we had a steering committee review the applications. And this is their recommendation for the 2025 allocations. They have about $96,000 in CBG administration costs. And we have quite a bit of dollars in affordable housing. Our largest program is the single-family rehab loan program. We have done a rental rehab program the last couple of years. I think this will be the third year of this program. We are looking to increase that a little bit. I think the first two years, we put about $100,000 into that bucket. And then we have administrative costs with the rehab programs that goes to cover our staff time and also our, the staff time from our colleagues at Homestead County who go out there and work with the homeowners on their rehab projects. And then we have about $100,000 in public infrastructure activities. So the timeline is that we're in the second box there right now. We're going to be in November where we're asking you to close the public comment period, adopt the Annual Action Plan for 2025, which includes those allocations of 2025 funding. And then we anticipate sometime in spring of 2025 HUD will do our allocation announcement. Depending on what, how much that dollar amount is, we may be back before you with an amendment to our plans. Once that's all done, said and done, we will submit those plans for approval by HUD. And eventually we'll get our funding sometime middle of next year or fall of next year. Questions, comments? So this evening, I do have a resolution in the packet that I'm asking the council for.
All right, so we will open the public hearing and get back to you.
Public hearing is open from the 20.
Excuse me, we will continue the public hearing and we'll get back to you with questions afterwards. So as Mr. Svenby said, we opened the public hearing at a previous meeting, so it is continuing to be open. Would anybody like to speak on this item G two? Welcome, come on up. Please introduce yourself and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Diane Wolfplatz. I'm a licensed social worker in LADC. Most of my clients, clients that I deal with, because of their, in what I would call disability, they have addiction problems. Some of them are not even ready to get out in the work field. And because of their past, they have these barriers, a lot of barriers. They may have a criminal record. Money is a barrier and they don't have any funding. Or they're on social security, which is only, barely only, maybe receiving $934 a month. I make quite a bit. And I'm even looking for affordable housing myself. So I've done some research on these little tiny homes. So I'm kind of hoping that that might be an option. Bob's Trailer Court is going to be cleaned out and I think that would be an excellent place for some tiny little homes. I don't know, the affordable housing, I keep hearing that affordable housing. I don't know if anybody understands what affordable housing is. There is no affordable housing whatsoever in Rochester. There is nothing. I have a client right now that's probably looking at a liver transplant. I can't find him a home. And he can't be, all the places that are affordable to these people, they're filled up. They're full. There's no room in the ins anymore. So I'm hoping that the board, that they would kind of, we need new structures. That's what I'm, you know, in tiny little homes, a lot of research is done on these tiny little homes. And I hope they're going to look into it. It's going to be a good investment. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for speaking. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? All right, I will close the public hearing and invite questions of staff. And I, Mr. Svenby, if you want to come back up. I guess I will just start off by one of the sort of big picture concerns that I have and sort of relates to what this woman who spoke just referenced is, this is a really small pot of money and these are really big goals and strategic priorities for this. So having, what is it, $700,000 or so to commit to improving access to affordable housing is a drop in the bucket. So I looked through the documents, they're a great source of information. But is there, is there a more, sort of, are there more objectives or targets that are sort of are concrete? sub-strategy, trying to get at, what are we actually trying to move the needle on in these priorities? It's not eloquently stated, but you get my idea.
Yeah, a big one is, is our single family rehab program because it serves people that are at that 80%, 80% AMI level or lower. It allows them to make improvements to their homes, to be either more energy efficient or it allows them to stay in their home longer. Putting in accessible bathrooms, kitchens. That's majority of our funding. But then we spend money on public service activities that are benefit to lower moderate income individuals also. Based on like, or helping the Boys and Girls Club or the Warming Center with the homeless shelter or the landing or Family Rochester. And it all, everything that we spend our CBG dollars, basically over the last couple of years, we spend 99% of our funds on people that are earning 80% AMI or less.
And they certainly, the work aligns with what we're saying. It's just when the recommendations are increase the supply of affordable housing. That's a big one.
Well, we look at that as our single family rehab program because it's keeping that supply out there.
Although preserve existing affordable housing is also part of that, so. Just feel.
It's, it's hard. Can't use CBG funds to construct new single family detached dwellings. You can rehab structures with single, with rehab or block man dollars, but you can't go and construct a single family dwelling with CBG dollars.
I think everybody did a great job, it's just big goals with not very much resource to put towards it. Councilmember Wall.
I thank President Carlson for that because she, I think more succinctly asked the question that I tried to ask maybe a couple of months ago. And we'll try to reframe it today using the single family rehab. How far does $250,000 go? How many clients would that, would that serve us in a year's time on average?
Oh, we shoot for 15 to 18 homes a year. We typically allow loans up to $25,000 just based on if it's over that dollar amount and the home is built before 1978. And you get into a lot more requirements with lead paint regulations. But we typically serve about 15 homes a year with those dollars. And that, and then those repayments that we get go back into the program and we typically put that money back into the single family rehab program. So yeah, our goal is about 15 homes a year.
Councilmember Keen, other questions?
Yeah, I, I mean, again, I'm just trying to round out this discussion and in a way, we're dealing with community development block grants. And like you say, it's a, it's a big number, $700,000. But I, I think the focus is, I've watched the, this move from being a spreadsheet where we used to give, you know, vote on different amounts of money for different groups. We tried to consolidate into this, the idea of having the biggest impact on affordable housing was through the rehab programs for both, you know, the naturally occurring affordable housing to maintain it to a higher level. But we also do things in here like the neighborhood ADA ramps, which to me has been, has been a good, a good thing. A lot of what I hear being discussed here is more of the Housing Redevelopment Authority and how that would work and that taxing authority. And, and we know the Homestead County is driving that and they're doing a lot of good work with it, but they're not going to address all the needs. It's just not, not the way it's, it's set up right now. I, I want to kind of protect the, the strategy we've had for CDBG and kind of make sure it stays stable and it does continue targeted and focused on that, that the county can expect to have this and we don't start changing. If, if we have a major change, that's, this group can do that, but we shouldn't be doing it quickly. We should be doing it.
You have a question?
No, I was trying to add back to the discussion because there were, there was discussion was, are we doing the right things?
Yeah. Mayor, did you have a question? And then we will ask for a motion or have Molly.
Yeah, just quickly, I, I too appreciate the targeting on the, particularly in the public service activities, really focusing on housing and, and daily care for folks. So I do appreciate that. Question I had was really triggered by something you just said, which is we have the single family rehab loan program, the rental rehab loan program. And you said when, when these get finished, money, the money is put right back into the program. So over the years, we have, you know, three or 400,000 and we're helping 15 people. Are we not getting money back every year to make that pot go bigger and bigger?
Well, we get about 100,000, I mean like, we, we plan about a hundred thousand dollars. So the allocations that in your packet account for us getting a hundred thousand dollars in repayments.
Okay, so.
Yeah, 772 is based off of our anticipated amount from HUD, which is 760, or 672. And we're planning a hundred thousand dollars in program income.
Okay, so over these years of 700, well, it wouldn't even be 700, but of the money we're, we're just, we've just added 100 back into the program.
But we, yeah, and we're allocating for every year.
Okay, well, that should grow every year if I'm.
It varies. This year we've gotten like 96,000 dollars in. Couple of years ago, we got like 200,000 dollars or more. It all depends on the market or people selling their homes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Dennis, question?
All right, thank you. I just want to echo the wonderful comments from the resident who came up here. There are so many barriers and so much need for affordable housing. And these organizations that are listed are wonderful organizations. I'm speaking on behalf of, I serve on the outside agency oversight committee. And that is for those who aren't aware of that, it's for, with eight, with organizations that help fulfill needs in our community that we give taxpayer dollars to that help, that the city would also be, be doing. We have a process of going through what organizations receive money, just to go into these organizations because these are just a handful of the amazing groups here in Rochester. How are these organizations picked? Just, just to refresh memory and then what kind of, like, like, do you go through and see how this money is being used? Make sure that's, you know, like, since this, every penny is incredibly important to every organization. Is there an audit kind of system or something that is just verifying that everything's being used in the way it's intended to be?
Yeah, yes. So every year the city puts out a, a call for applications and that's posted on our website. It's also listed in the paper that notifies the public that the city is accepting applications for block man funding. So that's how we get the word out. And then when they submit for reimbursement for the CBG dollars at the end of the year or before, at, before the end of the year, we'll have to go and audit that, that business to make sure that the, the funds were spent on individuals making or serving individuals at the 80% AMI level or less, so.
So there's accountability and they're making sure.
And we'll get audited by HUD and they'll come down and they'll pick out one program and they'll look through our files on that program to make sure everything is in there that needs to be in there.
Ms. Woodruff?
I would just also add that all of the information that we select or collect from all of the, these organizations also gets inputted into the system. And that also becomes part of that year-end report of what is accomplished through that funding. So there's kind of mechanisms along the way to collect that information and it gets reported out that way as well.
And then we also ask the agencies what other match, what, what other funding do they use to support their programs? And all that information gets submitted to HUD and it's also in our, the city's caper report.
Thank you, that sounds very efficient and I, I hope that maybe other agencies or departments and situations can model that because that seems wonderful that we need to know where every, every tax dollar is going. But thank you for the work you do. And my, I guess, I guess that was my main, one of my main questions, but I just, what, if you could have a magic number for future, what would that be for something to help really fill the gaps in some of these needs? I mean, magic number probably would be incredibly huge, but something that we could strive for.
Magic number CBG funds? That's.
Endless.
That's, yeah, it's endless, but yeah, we're restricted about what we're entitled to based on a formula that HUD has and that's what we, that's what we get, so.
Yeah, well, we can always strive for it. Thank you so much.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan, the 2025 annual action plan and the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice as required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the receipt of community development block grant funds.
Okay.
Councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, again, I watched that, in some cases I worry the amount of administration we have to put into, to do this and then that cost benefit trade-off. But I think we are having real impacts over the years on the, on the inventory of affordable housing, especially in our aging neighborhoods where these funds, where a lot of them end up being used.
Other discussion? All right, thank you, Mr. Svenby. All in favor, say aye. Say nay, motion carries. All right, that is it for our public hearings. We're moving on to item H1 under reports and recommendations, which is related to the transit operational scenarios analysis and requests for proposals for transit services.
President Carlson, can I do, put it as a point of order? There was an issue, I think, with cable transmission. I had a resident, I, I sent a message to the clerk and city administrator, have not heard a response. Just wanted to see if that tech issue has been solved so that residents are able to access this meeting who are watching that on the TV broadcast.
Council President, would you like me to answer that question?
Please.
As we provided to council several weeks ago, we are, we have a piece of equipment ordered that will allow the cable broadcast to continue. People should join by going to the website and watching the live stream of this.
Thank you for reminder. All right, so we have Ms. Yeh Jong here to introduce this item. Welcome, and we did have a study session on this topic a few weeks ago, so.
So good evening, Council President Carlson, Mayor Norton, council members. The item for you is on the analysis for the transit operation services. There was four scenarios that were evaluated. Scenario one being single vendor, which is currently the model that we have right now. Scenario two is multiple vendors providing the different services that we have. Scenario three is basically the same as scenario one, but bring maintenance in-house. And then scenario four is bringing everything in-house. So there was evaluation criterias that were conducted on these different scenarios. Scenario one and three were rated equally with scenario two and four less. And then also financial analysis was conducted on these different scenarios with scenario one being the lowest cost and then scenario four being the highest cost. With the, and then just a consideration is that any additional cost would be typically 80% is of our operations are through state and federal grants. And then 20% is locally funded through our transit fare collection, sponsorship and, and advertisement. And so any additional cost typically would have to be at the rate that those grant fundings would also be. Otherwise, we'd have to figure out how to pay for that extra cost. Our recommendation is to move forward with a request for proposal for scenario one and three. We would do a full and open competition or competitive procurement for, with a proposal to do a full operations with maintenance and then also a proposal for full operations with maintenance to be brought in-house. This will then allow us to evaluate the cost of what that would be and our ability to bring that in-house. It also then would mirror our, you, you also had, represented the citywide fleet evaluation. And with that, it would parallel whatever direction the city is going to move towards the centralization of fleet, the fleet. So by providing the two different scenarios or options for that RFP, we will have that option to evaluate that and be consistent with other city departments in our maintenance fleet. So I'll open it up for questions.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Jong. I know you mentioned this about the 80% and just how funds are divided for our transit system. So can you just explain a little bit more clearly that? Let's see how I say this, so it makes sense. So if it's 80%, that is based on what it currently costs us or how is that calculated? So if it costs us a few million dollars more a year because we've totally changed the model, that it's still, the 80% doesn't shift with our cost? It's, just help me understand that.
Correct, so there's annual funds from the state and fed, federal. And typically it covers 80% legislatively, depending on what it is. Like from this year to next year, there's a 3% increase. Previous years it was different based on availability of the state. It's through the motor vehicle sales tax. And so we, we would take a look if any increase, for example, the difference between scenario one and four is about 3.6 million annually. If we were to go with that, we'd have to determine where that additional 3.6 is going to come from. The state does not have an extra 80% of that to, to, to grant to us. And so we would have to figure out how we're gonna support that. As mentioned, our local share comes from our fare collection. We haven't raised our fare, ridership has not increased. It hasn't decreased, but slowly increasing, but it's not going to increase significant enough to cover that, that amount. And then also through advertising, which is a small percentage of our revenue. So we'd have to look towards tax levy in order to, or some other funding source to cover that additional cost.
Thank you, are there other questions? Councilmember Keen?
I, I just want to try to get my, my facts right. You mentioned the difference between scenario one and four was 3.7 million? And I'm, I'm just, I'm reading the chart on page 341, which is the, you know, shows the 10-year operational cost average. And the numbers are much bigger and that's the cumulative of 10 years? Or I'm just trying to get my head around.
Annual versus accumulative.
So my number, my page numbering is a little off.
Okay, this is just the summary, operation summary scenario comparisons where you've just got a, a table that's got the option one, two, three and four and then 10-year cost, final score, that one. And I, again, I, Councilmember Wall is pointing out 10 years, but, but it's 301 million versus 255. So that'd be like 25 a year and 80% covered by state and federal. I'm just trying to see if that's, that's what you meant, then you net down to a difference between those two is 3 million?
Yeah, 3.6 million annually.
Annually?
Yeah.
Okay, and that, that would be the difference, the cost difference between scenario one and four?
Correct.
That's not right on the page, but you'd already done the math to figure that.
Yes, and, and it is, they did, the analysis did conduct a 10-year analysis and so that, that 3.6 is an average.
Yeah, no, I, I realize when we're going out, there's all kinds of things that can come and change, but I wanted to make sure I had the facts right. Thank you.
So I'm going to try to ask another question. I'm sorry, I'm struggling to get my words together tonight, but obviously we have a roomful of concerned people who have shared, expressed concern along the way. So a, a new contract would go out to bid. Do we have an opportunity as we're negotiating that contract to have an ability to address some of the concerns that have been brought up in the past? In the recent fut- or recent past? I'm sorry, I'm really struggling tonight, but is there any more to have influence as city leadership? I know that we're dealing with unions, I know this is a sensitive topic, I'm trying to ask it appropriately.
Council President Carlson, what we would do is, the reason why we're doing it so far in advance, the current contract ends in 2026, at the end of 2026. This will allow us to start putting the scope together, putting some lessons learned from our current contract and ensuring that it's in there. Again, these are, it's a contractor and just like any contract that the city has, I, I mean, that, it would be modeled similarly to any contract that we would have. So we don't typically do employee terms in the contract. But we could take a look and say there are certain services that we want to provide at certain levels and they would need to meet that level. And so there, there are things that we could put in there in terms of the contract, but typically we do not put employee, employer terms in.
All right, Councilmember Wall?
You caught me trying to look up something, but that's okay. I will go back to the question. An easier question to begin with. And the projections, will EV vehicles be less costly to maintain?
Electric vehicles are projected to cost less, yes, because it's moved. Electric vehicles are projected to cost less, yes, because it's moving, less moving pieces. Now, there is a cost, like the initial cost is more, the capital piece of it, and then the maintenance of it is less. Yeah.
So the maintenance people that the number three proposal would, bringing the maintenance people in-house, could require fewer people in the future if it turns out that there's less work that needs to be done to maintain the fleet?
I wouldn't equate personnel to the cost of maintaining it. Maintaining an EV takes a different type of skill set, different PPEs, different requirements. There might be a requirement to have two electricians or mechanics and not just one for safety reasons. And so it, I don't think it like equates one-to-one like a dollar cost like that.
Okay.
Yep.
And then in the cover page, I think that you did a very nice job describing how it is that these four proposals were analyzed. Could you say something more about AECOM, the transportation consultant, as someone independent of Rochester Public Transit who has assisted us in getting to the dollar amounts? So it doesn't appear that we have just kind of pulled figures out of the air?
Correct. So AECOM was hired by MINDOT as a consultant, and they are online too, if you, if we have questions for them. And they are like, I forget what it stands for, but they are a transportation consultant. They're, the team that was hired have the transit background. What they did was they took a evaluation or look at the National Transit Database, which is a database from the Federal Transit Administration that has all the transit agencies in there looking at their cost. There's an annual report that's get, gets put out there. We are also a part of that. And so similar agencies to us in regards to size and population was reviewed and evaluated. Their expertise is way above mine. That's why they were hired. And it was through their evaluation and their experience that they evaluated and determined the criterias of what the valuation was.
And including staffing?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other question? Councilmember Dennis, then Kirkpatrick?
All right. Thank you. So, yeah, we had a study session on this, and some questions were asked about the different scenarios. Overall, I've heard, well, not just tonight, but on several occasions, people have come who are bus drivers, who are, who are knowledgeable, lived experience, professionals who have, you know, real expert thoughts on what works and what doesn't. And what I have heard from reading emails and from listening to the voices of people who spoke is that they want to be in-house completely. And there's a lot of people who, and I'm not, you know, taking that in, you know, wrong, but I believe that is a scenario that has been spoken by the vast majority of people and not just, you know, making it a, you know, hybrid kind of situation. Why is this not a public hearing? Because when we have people come and open comment, they have very limited, we've, as council, cut down their speaking ability from four minutes down to two, but in open, in a public hearing, they have more time to speak. And there's so many people that rely on public transportation, transit, for not just their work and their livelihoods, but survival, going to emergency room visits and doctor's appointments. And so I guess I'm just, I mean, you have a lot of influence on how the, you know, this has been presented. Why was this not done as a public hearing? And why is it being done as a reports and recommendations, such a huge vote for so many people in our community?
Mr. Yetzer?
Counsel President Carlson, I can take that one. Thanks for the question, Councilmember Dennis. I would just say typically when we put things on public hearings, it's not just the will of the staff choosing to put it on public hearings. There's something pointing to us putting it on public hearings. For example, both of the items that were on public hearings today, a public hearing is required. So we could have potentially had that conversation, but that had never been flagged. So reports and recommendations is the typical avenue for this type of decision, and that's what public comment is for, is to be able to comment on those things, not on public hearings. So that was the basis for it, is this is generally where these types of discussion items land, is reports and recommendations.
Well, I just have to respectfully disagree. I think it has been flagged that this is something that would be wonderful as a public hearing, so, and as input has been brought to us, as people have opinions on this. I do believe that.
Councilmember Dennis, do you have another question before we move into discussion?
Okay. So, okay, my, I guess my question will be just the first off that. So what is required by law, I believe is not always the correct thing to do. We should go above and beyond what is required bare minimum from our legislators. So, so what would be the next step? Could we, as a council, now propose it be cut now and transferred to another meeting as a public hearing, so more voices can be heard? I mean, maybe some, some staff recommendation and how that motion can be made so that people who obviously watching cable can't watch that, who have been cut from public comments on social media, people who have not been able to voice opinions can come up here at a public hearing.
Councilmember Dennis, we got your question, so.
Thank you.
I don't know who wants to try to respond to that.
Generally speaking, a public hearing comes with notification requirements, and we have not met those notification requirements. So if that's what you're interested in, I think you would need to continue this to a date certain, and in that motion, request that this be posted as a public hearing. And I would just note that we are on a timeline with this decision, so I would ask that we take that into consideration.
Okay, so I will, I'm going to be planning on doing that once we get done with questions here. I will propose that, but what is the timeline situation? What sensitivities do we have to fall by to fulfill?
Yeah. So if you recall back at the study session, the reason why we're coming to you now is through the Bus Rapid Transit Link Project with the FTA Risk Readiness Review. We underwent that review, and one of the recommendations from FTA was to make a decision on how we're going to pursue continuing the services beyond 2026. That decision needed to be made in November, and that was the timing of our grant and agreements and the process that FTA is going through. So it is important that we make a decision.
But would there be time to do a public hearing? I understand that we are at the.
Currently, not now. There is no, there is no time now because there needs to be notification. And so I.
So for the record, there is absolutely no possible way we can do a public hearing for this. It has to be done under reports and recommendations? Is that what, just for the record, because this is really important to many people.
I don't know what the timeline of notification, how many weeks.
I think, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, the decision needs to be made in November. So we could do a public hearing on November 18th, if that's what the will of the council is.
On November, okay. Thank you. I will propose, I will propose that after these, these questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. What criteria, Eya, was used to determine option four and the cost attached to that?
I'm going to have to look at my notes here or the report, but if you had looked at the different cost scenarios, you'll see that scenario one, two, and three had like a range, and that was because it consisted of vendors. And so with that, in the report, it talks about using the National Transit Database and the comparison and price adjustments for location and cost of living and things like that. For scenario four, what they're doing is building out that services because we're bringing it in-house. So they basically itemized everything and did an independent cost estimate. And what that would have included is all like the, like the staffing and the, and software, the support that we would need, like computers, and basically building out what it would take in order to bring everything in-house. It's not just the, the human aspect of it. It's everything to support that. So equipment, vehicles, laptops, software, everything that would support a person working.
It seems high to me for that, but I, I understand what you're saying. So AECOM didn't go to TransDev to ask, or AECOM didn't contact TransDev, the drivers themselves for information, they used a national database?
Not, well, for scenario four, what they looked at, and Jill, if you're on, they did the analysis. So what, what they did for scenario four is, they did talk to TransDev, obviously, to see what their current situation is, how many managers, you know, that, that, you know, current status. And then for billing out scenario four, it was looking at the BRT model and what that future support is going to be needed in regards to the mechanics and the dispatchers and the supervisors and the training that's going to be needed. And so they built that out. And so there was a cost.
Would you like Ms. Kahoon to weigh in?
Yes.
Okay. We may need her moved over to be a panelist. So Jill, if you're on, we're trying to transfer you over to be a panelist, and you can go ahead and unmute yourself, and you use star nine to unmute yourself? Is it star nine or star six? Been so long since I've said that.
Good evening.
There you are. Thank you.
All righty, I'm here. So, Eya, if I understood, the question was around the development of, of scenario four and, and really in the development of all of the scenarios and looking at each of the different pieces, and, you know, as an independent look at cost, which is forecasted expenses over a 10-year time horizon, complexity, which is the time and labor and planning needed to implement any scenario, liability was the level of liability taken on by the city depending on the, on the scenario, the, an element of control, ability to implement changes quickly and effectively to achieve desired outcomes, staffing requirements, which would be new positions, training, union considerations, and restructuring. And then uncertainty was the final evaluation criteria, potential risk to the continuity, quality, or cost of providing transit service. And so for each of the scenarios, they were evaluated independently using, using that set of criteria, and all of the costs were built out utilizing existing, the information on existing contracts as well as future contracts, for example, from the Bus Rapid Transit model, as well as the organizational structures of the, the existing Rochester Public Transit, the city employees who support Rochester Public Transit as perhaps part of their, of their day-to-day, as well as the, the organization of the proposed Bus Rapid Transit operation.
Okay, thank you. And I'm assuming then also that same criteria or components were used to analyze options one and three as well, looking at future breakdown, including BRT, and then as we have the existing system now?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
For all four scenarios, yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then I, just one final question, I believe. If, if, if we're unable to do this now, option four, how soon in the future might we be able to look at this again and consider scenario four?
As far as like how soon, I mean, what we would want to do is, the current contract that we have is a five-year with renewable terms, up to a maximum of 10. And we'd want to maybe have a similar timeframe for that. But within that, anytime, we can, we can start evaluating and determining what pieces can be brought in or how we can bring it in. Yeah.
So then, sorry, another question. So then, as the BRT comes online then, and that's actualized in 2026, when the TransDev contract ends, is there a possibility of only creating a two-year contract so then we could begin that assessment phase and then understand more clearly whether or not we could bring option four into the fold by 2028?
So you're suggesting a two-year contract instead of a five-year contract? The two-year contract would, we could, we could structure it that way. We'd have to take a look and see like how quickly we would then have, because basically as soon as you award it, you're going to have to do it, you're going to have to review it. So that's why we have the two-year period before it ends to evaluate that. What you also might not get is, because it's a two-year contract, the rate might not be the same as if it was a five-year contract. So that's something to determine.
Ms. Alms?
I think that, thank you, Council President, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, I think, Eya actually was, Ms. Jong was actually answering what I was going to want to add on to, but I guess I would just say that you would also during that timeframe need to be evaluating and probably prior to that, what city, other city resources you're willing to commit to bringing things in-house as pieces of it, just like a piece of it. In option three, it would still likely cost more and need to have consideration for how the city would fund that. And is that the top priority or are there other priorities in the city at that time that the city council would want to prioritize its funding and resources towards? We just talked about an item at length about affordable housing that has some of those same resources that could go towards it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Keen?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Rochester Public Transit Operational Scenario Analysis and authorize in the release of requests for proposals for transit services that include the pricing for both inclusion of fleet maintenance services and pricing without fleet maintenance service.
Second.
Councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
Yeah, these are difficult things. We went through this in a lot of detail before. The thing that, that I try to keep in mind here is we try to run our transit as an enterprise, and because of the really good federal and state funding, and then that we're responsible for this 20%, and it's important that we make sure we have the resources through what we're doing to cover that. And right now, we do. It's just one of those hard facts that it's, it would be more expensive to go this other way, and we do not know how we'd come up with that money right now. Therefore, I'm going to support the recommendations.
Thank you, Councilmember Keen. Other comments? Councilmember Dennis?
Okay. So are we, just for point of clarification first, we are done with staff questions or we, are we, because we had a motion on the table, is that correct?
You can still ask for reports and recommendations if you have another question.
No, okay, just want to make sure. I, I'm going to make the, a motion to continue this to the date certain of November 18th to allow to bring this forward as a public hearing so that voices of citizens who are using public transit and those who are, the drivers, have more of a voice in this matter. So.
Okay. Point of order, Mr. Yetzer or Mr. Spindler-Craig? Who has the clarification here? Go ahead.
Before clarification, we would just see if there's a second.
Oh. Okay. All right. So this is one of these really hard times of being a council member because you obviously care about the people in your community and want what's best for as many people as possible. And so you look around the room and see all these incredible leaders in our community who contribute their lives and their livelihoods to making sure people get around our community safely and to their work and to their homes and to be with their loved ones. And yet we also have to think about what it would mean to our community overall to have an additional $3 million or approximately $3 million in expense and where that would come from and what sort of impact that would have on houses and households across our community. So it's awful to sit here and look at all of you and appreciate what you do for our community and that you're asking us to do this and to not be able to support it. Other comments? Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I just, I want to echo what you say. You know, four of us have asked some pretty significant questions about bringing in scenario four, and I, I really want to watch this over the course of the next couple of years. And, you know, the estimate is 11,000 people on day one with the BRT. And I, I'm actually concerned that that's really going to happen. So as that, as that usage ramps up and we have a more realistic calculation or understanding of what we need to bring scenario four to fruition, I, I'm hoping we will have the ability to sign a shorter contract so that we can perhaps actualize this in, in 2028, two years after. two years after we've completed, which would give us the timeline that we're looking at right now, actually. I don't see it as being terribly different. So that's my comment on this.
Councilmember Keen?
I guess just a little different perspective. Council President Carlson talks about where we would get the money to fund this. I think the more likely scenario is we would be getting rid of all our routes that don't perform to these levels of expenses. That's the real impact here. Right now, we're running for a city of 125,000. We're able to stand up a public transportation system. And that's pretty hard to do with the sprawl of 50-plus square miles. Councilmember Kirkpatrick brings up the BRT, and there is some potential for major improvements. BRT is run as a separate entity and with its own economics. But we have the ability to potentially greatly improve the routes now with this spine going up middle of the city. But to change upfront and start taking on these other expenses, there'll be a hue and cry against doing the public transportation. And that's what I'm trying to fight against.
Councilmember Wall?
And I think a factor that I'm not sure has been mentioned tonight is if we improve a level of service with a greater expenditure of money. And I'm not certain that that's what the goal is with Number Four. I understand the goal. I think that people would love to be employees of Rochester, Minnesota, as opposed to an outside vendor, but represented by unions. And I hope that a union that is serving its members well. And I don't necessarily see that we will make leaps, strides in improvement of service by going with the more expensive route.
Any final comments? Councilmember, are you raising your hand? Okay, well, Councilmember Dennis?
Okay. Well, thank you. So who I have heard from by far the most is the wanting this as the fourth option. The benefits, of course, are increased, you know, oversight, this kind of, you know, thing where we're putting this off to consultants and then we have to deal with competitive bidding. We have to deal with different, you know, regulations. I feel that people have spoken. We have, this is something that is really important to those who are daily working in this field. And I'm just really saddened that we're not listening to people and we're not even allowing them. There was no second on turning this into a public hearing that could have easily been done to allow more voices to be heard. We have been seeing systematically the silencing of residents' voices, not just with, I'm not going to name all the ways, but if you've been paying attention, all the ways the last few years that we have taken away people's voices. And to allow residents to have a voice on what they want in their public transit, I think is, not to allow that is a shame on our council. So I'm not going to vote. I mean, I would try to, I was trying to amend the motion to do an in-house option. But I take it from council, that's not going to happen at this moment in time. So I'm going to vote, actually, no, I will. I'm just, I'm going to make a motion to see if anyone seconds this. I would like to make a motion to amend this motion to have it Option Four, which would be completely in-house with greater oversight and to reflect the voices of the people.
Point of order, is this an amendment?
Amendment, yes, please.
Oh, so an amendment to, can you say what the amendment is? To change it from bidding Options One and Three to bid Option Four?
Yes, I would like, just for the record, to see who second and vote for that. So yes, I would like to amend the motion on the table to change it from, thank you for the wording, Option One and Three to Option Four, having everything in-house.
It's not a.
Point of order.
It's not a bid.
Wouldn't that be a substitute motion?
Yes.
And we can certainly deal with that.
My wording is not correct. This is all new territory with trying to redo this whole thing here. But.
Okay, we got your idea here. Do you have a point of order?
Yeah, point of order. So the motion or the.
Replacement.
Yes, thank you. The replacement motion is not just for Four, but it's also for One and Three.
No.
So it's just for Four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I guess One and Three wouldn't change anyway.
Yep. Okay, is there a second? All right.
Second. Question, second for discussion.
All right, Councilmember, or Dennis, you have the floor.
Hey, I appreciate the second. As I have said, and we, if people listen to the study session a few weeks ago, this is something that we have seen people bring this forward who have talked about the importance of having this oversight. I mean, I shared a lived experience as someone who almost lost their life. You know, we need, because of the need for transportation, we need to make sure that there is consistency and that people who are working this day in and day out have a voice. And yes, unions, I'm a big fan of. But it was just pointed out that in an email and now in public comment that we are not even listening to the union rep. That, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that the city attorney instructed that staff is not supposed to respond or to communicate with the union representative. I mean, if we.
That's not accurate.
It's not accurate. Okay, please clarify your email then. I'm so sorry. I don't want to spread, please.
It's irrelevant to this discussion and it's not accurate.
Could you clarify what is accurate? So for the record, just so.
I think the most important thing is the union is in direct negotiation with the contract holder who we are in negotiation with. So the city is not able to negotiate directly with the union. So can you move on to the next topic?
Okay, so I'm just, my point is if communication is not there as it is, I mean, we need to have communication strengthened and having it in-house, I believe, would do so. I have always been, the last four years, a huge advocate for people's voices, people in Ward Six, many of them take public transit. I think, I mean, we just voted against a public here, unfortunately. But to allow the wonderful drivers who, day in and day out, to be part of this amazing organization of Rochester City Government, I think this is something that would benefit taxpayers in the long run. It would benefit residents. It would benefit communication, oversight. I just, I think it's a win-win and win for everyone. And I believe we should listen to the voices of people because that is why I ran for public office. And I think that should be why everyone else as well, is that the people have come up in dozens and dozens over the last emails and correspondence to voice that this is the option that they prefer. And as their amplifier of their voice, I would like to have this as the option that we, as a council, vote on. Thank you.
So in some of the door-knocking I've done this past election, there are people who literally are saying, we want to support, for instance, the school referendum. We believe in it and we literally don't have the dollars to do it. And I think there's that very real concern that whether Councilmember Keen or I or somewhere in between is right, a $3.5 million impact on the tax levy is like a 6% or something, 5% impact on the tax levy annually. That is a huge amount of impact on our residents. That it just, it's just a really awful decision to have to make. And, but it's a consideration, so. Any other discussion? You can go ahead, Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I seconded to hear what was offered. I don't find that what was offered was substantial enough to go ahead and move this amendment forward. But I did want to say that I very much appreciate the economics of this situation. Ward Four, if you pull the Mayo Clinic downtown campus out of it, it's probably the poorest economic ward in the city, which is what I represent, including the Mayo Clinic. It's probably the wealthiest. So the people need to be able to feel safe and secure in what they go forward with, with the tax levy. But it's not just about the economics. What bothers me about the contract that's existing right now is the pressure that's placed on the drivers, the unfair or inhumane or lack of human rights issues that are being addressed to keep you all safe, to keep you all functioning, and to keep you all doing your jobs the best you can. And as we're so concerned with DEI, and might I suggest J, with what was going on in the sustainability with our city, I believe it's best to bring you all into the fold so that we can meet your needs, so that you can best increase that service, so that service can go up. But that service also needs to come from how the drivers and how our service providers are treated and how you're able to do your work. So that's the piece I wanted to add. But I'm not willing to go with this amendment at this point because of the burden that will go on to our taxpayers. And I hope you can understand that. And that's a really huge ask because you all are the ones that would suffer the most doubly with that levy increase and then also with the continuation of the contract the way it is. And it's really hard for me to say that and honor that.
Councilmember Bransford, I know you were waiting to speak. Do you want to speak to the amendment or wait till we?
Okay.
So all in favor of the amendment to replace or the substitute motion to replace with Option Four? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Okay, motion fails with Councilmember Kirk, Dennis voting aye. All right, so we're back to the original motion. And Mr. Bransford wanted to speak.
I have listened to several people, including the union rep. And my heart really goes out because I understand, I understand where you guys are coming from. And my heart really does go out to you guys. And I really wish that I could have picked in-house. And that's little comfort, I see head shake. I mean, the economic reality of a $3.6 million hit to the city's levy is just, it's just a lot of money. And we do have other considerations like, you know, the, just that level of tax increases, just as a steward of the city's dollars and as a steward of, you know, other people who barely can pay the levy as it is on a fixed income. You know, you have to balance these things, right? So, you know, who would win in that argument, right? Somebody coming in and saying, gosh, another 6%? I could barely make it now versus, you know, approving an in-house, which does definitely help people. And this is, you know, like Council President Carlson said, this is a tough one. This is hard. But it's, that's why we sit here, you know? We have to make these tough decisions. And I really wish I could vote for Number Four. I really do. But, you know, it's just, it's too difficult financially for the city to swing it right now.
Councilmember Palmer?
I'll call the question.
All right. Councilmember, everybody's had a chance to speak. All right. If ever say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries six, one, with Councilmember Dennis voting nay. All right, why don't we take a five-minute break or reconvene here at 7:50? We just have a couple items after that.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress. Oh, hmm. Ow. Oh, shoot. Well, we have two pulled items by Councilmember Dennis who's not here. Wendell, could you go see if Councilmember Dennis is out there? Okay. I don't think that's fair. Okay. Okay, we're moving on to items H2, which was F4, pulled by Councilmember Dennis. It's the 2025 council meeting calendar, and we have Clerk Geisler here if there are questions. And I'd ask for a brief explanation of why Councilmember Dennis pulled this item and then a motion shortly thereafter.
I just want to thank the council for how respectful everyone is at this meeting. It's very, very refreshing, and I appreciate that, giving me time for getting my papers, which has not happened in the past on many occasions. So, thank you. I am pulling this agenda because I have heard a lot of complaints from residents who believe that the agendas are overly packed, and I have mentioned this at other council meetings. I know that the city administrator, I'm sorry, city attorney has sent out a memo saying that there's words that we cannot use.
Just a point of order.
But I wanted to.
A point of order.
Who has the floor?
This is about calendars. Can we keep this to calendars? That's what we're talking about, is calendar, dates of meetings.
Okay. Well, I'm bringing that point up because I do not want to violate the city attorney's memo by using words like rubber stamp.
Okay, Councilmember Dennis, what is your concern about the?
Well, there's a lot of, thank you so much. There's a lot of concern about meetings being rushed, overly packed, and thus having not enough time to discuss items because of the meetings. And when we have council agenda, council calendars where there are council study sessions that are, for example, we did not have a study session on October 28th. I'm not really sure why. I did propose that we have that as a question-answer period for the complex budgets that we are going to be voting on. That was denied, but we, there is a council study session tonight, please correct me if I'm wrong, on November 13th, but that is when two council members are going to be at the National League of Cities Conference.
So, point of order. Just to clarify, Council President, our normal way of doing business here is we make motion and then we'll make an amendment to it.
Actually, a brief explanation. She's clarified that she has some concerns to share. She shared her concerns. Let's do a motion.
I'm still sharing my concerns.
Well, what I'd like to do, just make a motion, then the concerns could be amendments to what the calendar is, if that's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to approve a calendar, so we should be able to move that way. So I'd make a motion to adopt the 2025 calendar of regular meetings for the common council of the City of Rochester in accordance with the Minnesota State Statute, Chapter 13D and subsection 1.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor?
No, again, if there are specific things, the council member wants to make changes to that, we should hear those and see if the council agrees and move on from there. That's how we do our business.
So comments specific to 2025 calendar, Councilmember Dennis?
Okay. Well, when looking at this calendar, it looks like things like the National League of Cities and the League of Minnesota City Conferences aren't really taken into account. But please correct me if I'm not seeing this correctly. I do feel that there should be council meetings reflecting the importance of those pivotal conferences that not only educate new council members who are coming into the position, but also connect and allow ideas and interactive, innovative discussions that can help lower taxes, can help our society by learning from other communities. And I think those conferences are pivotal. I know some of my colleagues have cut the funding for people to attend, but I still believe those are incredibly important from past council recommendations, and that should be reflected in the calendar to show that we honor that learning and having educated and informed and engaged council members are a priority of our growing and amazing city. So we should reflect those conferences with the time, not to have them miss meetings or study sessions. Thank you.
Council President Carlson, Councilmember Dennis, those dates are indeed taken into account, and they are listed in the RCA as weeks that are blued out, and they're also listed in the additional attachment of additional dates to consider to show the exact dates.
Is ready to vote?
I just, just sort of clarification, though. So when I looked at the dates, they do fall on the dates that have meetings. Is that correct? Or, I mean, just, I mean, so there's like, I guess I just feel this is a full-time job as well. So you have like March 30, you know, you have different days that are, do not have council meetings. And I, and I just, I feel like to have questions answered and to make these meetings, we've already condensed the study sessions now are twice a month instead of four times a month, to have more time to ask questions in a public forum where it's transparent and people can hear and analyze what the responses are. I mean, this behind, you know, the scene.
Point of order, Council President.
Sure. Mr. Spindler, Craig.
Would just suggest to the council that those comments are not germane to the calendar that's in front of you. It's essentially a rehashing or recrimination of rules and prior occurrences. It's just not germane to the motion.
Thank you. All right.
Could you define incrimination? I'm just, I don't know.
Dennis, we're going to go ahead and vote.
I don't like misinformation being spread, so I just would like to clarify that comment. Rehashing, I believe this is germane.
Dennis, that's first warning. All right, let's go ahead and vote on this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries six, one. Councilmember Dennis voting nay. All right, you've also pulled item F6, which is now H3, and it's the proposed ordinance amendment to Rochester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 88, juvenile curfew. I know we have Captain Turk here to answer questions, so a brief explanation and then a motion, please.
Okay, thank you. I did reach out to staff. I just wanted to clarify, that's something I do at every single council meeting, try to get every answer answered prior to the council meeting to avoid pulling consent agenda items, and this is one of those many times that I have reached out. And I was talking to Ms. Chow Mattella for some DEI background on how this may, you know, what kind of data is being collected for equity? Is this being disproportionately impacting communities of color? Is this, you know, what reasons why juveniles are being cited for violations? Is it, is there issues with transportation barriers with work? You know, and also I've talked to police officers up in the cities, and there has been issues with city or, you know, juvenile curfews, and so they went to a countywide, the county does a curfew. So I just wanted to have some clarification on if Omsa County has been contacted and having a curfew instead of just our city, or, and then also what kind of data has been collected on those who have been impacted by this curfew, and if there is a correlation between any kind of equity issues that we might need to address. And so I do believe that safety is important, and I support the police department with that avenue of keeping youth, especially as a teacher. We need to make sure that youth, you know, have, you know, a safety net, but I just want to make sure that we are doing this equitably. Thank you.
Sorry, everybody. All right, Council President, City Minister, Mayor, and council members. So I did speak with Chow as well. We did some research prior to try and answer your questions. Councilmember Dennis, overall, there were 26 individuals that were contacted. A lot of the calls that we have, you had mentioned citations, so specifically, nobody has been issued a citation this year for a curfew violation. All of the interactions that the police officers have had with individuals who are out past curfew, usually it becomes kind of a secondary thing. They have contact with somebody because they come across them from a different aspect. So it isn't necessarily a proactive tool that's used to have, to stop an individual. Usually there's something else that comes along, and then that's kind of a secondary thing that they discuss with them. It's used, and then once they cross that threshold, then it's kind of an educational component of there's a curfew, and then there's a reach back usually to family members and then work on reuniting the kids, getting them back home. And so that's general the course of action. I spoke to one of the sergeants that works one of the overnight shifts, and it's even for himself, he has not even really had to deal with the curfew issue himself or some of his staff really in the last year. So it's a very, very small group. And then with that, as far as any metrics around collection of demographic information is usually, because citations are not being written, we're not collecting that type of demographic information. So an officer may go out, have interaction with a couple kids, their names get added into our calls for service, and then after that, they release them to family. And so from there, there's no collection of data that's going into a database like our record system. There's a brief interaction, but there isn't a formal entry into a record system that's tracking all of that information.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on your calls of service? I guess just to, you know, inform myself and the public what that is.
Okay, so a call, a calls for service is kind of two ways. So it's a police interaction out in the community that's documented at a basic level within our computer-aided dispatch system. So it's either a call is generated in the dispatch center, so any type of call that comes in that requires an officer to respond, or an officer is engaged in a proactive thing, like a traffic stop, stopping a vehicle, or coming across a group hanging out in the park after hours or something like that, and they'll call out on the radio and say, you know, I'm out with a group for, you know, to check on suspicious activity. So it's, a calls for service is a computer documentation method at the very basic level of how we track contacts with the community.
Great. Thank you. So, I mean, I'm a fan of having ways of keeping everyone safe, and youth, of course, have gone through incredible challenges with the pandemic, and they have a lot of, a lot of people say, a lot of youth have said, there's nothing to do in Rochester. So if there's something to do, a lot of times keeps kids busy, right? And if there's nothing to do, if nothing for, well, this was what I was told by youth of teenage, young adults, not as much stuff to do in Rochester, then sometimes, you know, other things can be used for entertainment, too. I'm just imagining so. Is there something that can help with violations? Is, I mean, having a, just kind of above and beyond to help with the curfew, having activities, things that, or, I know the work, so I have that question, and then work, of course, you know, permits and stuff. So those are two separate questions. One about, like, have you seen an increase in youth, you know, issues since COVID, since some of this, some of the things? And then also, what is being done to help students, or not students, I'm sorry, youth who do have jobs because they need to provide for their families and have that to not be impacted by this curfew? Those are two questions. Thank you.
Sure. So in regards to, you know, people who are working jobs, it's clear, there are exceptions within the ordinance, the way it's written, so that if, if people are traveling, you know, from work to home, and they were to be stopped for whatever reason, and they told the officer, I just got done with my shift at work, I'm on the way home, that's an exception to the ordinance. So that, so now they're exempt from that timeframe. And then other, other activities that go on within the community, officers also use a great deal of discretion if they know they're just kind of traveling. But anything that's especially a school-related activity, there's an exemption within the ordinance as well. So if they're coming and going from a kind of school-sponsored activity as well.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good. So not necessarily just subjective, there is ordinances. Okay, and then, and just to clarify, is there a demographic kind of component where you are tracking who is being, you know, I mean, just, I'm just, just for, but, I mean, maybe I apologize if I missed that. So is there a way of tracking that so that we know that we are truly fostering DEI and not disproportionately?
So a general, basic interaction does not track?
Oh, does not track, okay.
Those type of metrics.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
And maybe just a reminder that our police department is continuing to go through cultural humility and DEIJ training and really thinking about the front end of those interactions. I don't know if you wanted to just mention that briefly. I think that's what she's trying to get at, is how the work that you're doing within the police department to advance justice.
Right. Yep, there's a great deal of training that's done every year, and there's requirements even from our licensing that continues to address and enhance the understanding of, you know, disparities and things like that in the community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wall?
I move to approve a proposed ordinance amendment to Rochester Code of Ordinances, Section 8810, related to the effective date of the juvenile curfew ordinance extending the expiration date to December 31st, 2026, secondarily directing the city attorney's office to prepare an ordinance for a first reading.
Second.
Councilmember Wall?
Nothing to add.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, just one last question. This is, it appears this is something that, you know, we've had on the books, and we set it up so that it gets renewed. This is something that this council said, this is sort of like inappropriate way of treating our youth. Would law enforcement act like, no, this is an important tool to us? Or would you kind of say, that's up to you?
I think we would reassess where we're at kind of in the community culturally and what activities are out there and just the interactions that we're having. I mean, just doing the general review of the calls over the last couple of years. And I think that's one of the reasons it kind of sunsets every couple of years, is that we are taking an active approach to take a look and see how it fits with the way, you know, we want to function as a community. It's been on the books for a long time.
And I grew up with curfew things, and I'm used to it, but there is this mental model that says, it's not a crime being out, but I think we have this profiling that says, but that's when crime happens. So it is a little bit worrisome that if it were being misused. It's important to me that when I hear you talk about it's a secondary thing and there isn't a citation. and there isn't a citation, but it also isn't something that we're sort of saying like, hmm, let's go out and look for this. It, it seems like it's something that we kind of use, but it doesn't seem like an important tool, or how Rochester is, Rochester's second, third shift is doing their job in an overnight.
Correct. So the curfew, yes, is probably a secondary, but it's because we're responding to some other complaint. But that does help us with the resolution of certain activities that are taking place in, in the community. And I don't want to get into too in-depth because that's probably what you don't want. But there's, it is a tool to use to help us curb certain levels of behavior, but it isn't necessarily where we're just driving up on a group, and we're just checking them for curfew.
Right.
However, we could do that, but it's based on probably some other issue that's been identified in the community for activity or something that's maybe taking place. And we would be able to use it if we felt there was a group that was maybe generally in that age range after a certain hour.
Maybe just correct me if I'm wrong, but also what I heard you saying earlier is, it is a tool to help you reunite the youth with their family, which I don't know how you would do that as easily without the curfew.
Correct. Yeah.
So it's a good point. It's an important point. I, I guess, part of this is, I'm trying to get my sense here that, you know, the, the old, old adage is nothing good happens after midnight, and, and that's sort of like old, old, like wisdom. But at the same time, you don't want to create an environment where we're assuming right away something bad's happening because it's after midnight.
Correct. Correct. And I'm in agreement with that. And I can go back, as I worked as an officer and, and dealt with people hanging out and things like that late at night, the reason we would approach a group is because there's been an ongoing lingering issue of some type of disorderly behavior or something in a certain area. And so it's a tool for us to approach if somebody looks like they're kind of under that age after midnight, that there are some things that after, happen after midnight, but clearly, but generally, it's not this kind of primary tool. It's, it's a secondary.
No, I appreciate your answers. And that really did help, that idea that City Administrator Zelm says, it gives us the ability to do the reunite. So thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And a? Motion carries. All right, we're moving on to several ordinance first readings, and I will turn it over to Mr. Spindler-Craig to walk us through J one through J five.
Thank you, Madam President. Item J one, an ordinance amending Section two dash one dash two of Chapter two dash one of Title two of the Rochester Code of Ordinances establishing fees and charges for licenses, permits, services, and other charges provided by the City of Rochester. Moving on to item J two, an ordinance annexing to the City of Rochester approximately 36.84 acres of land located south of Wheelock Drive Northeast and north of Silver Creek Road Northeast and the East Circle Drive Northeast and Viola Road Northeast right-of-way parcels. Item J three, an ordinance annexing to the City of Rochester approximately 49.90 acres of land located south of Wheelock Drive Northeast and north of Silver Creek Road Northeast and the East Circle Drive Northeast and Viola Road Northeast right-of-way parcels. Item J four, an ordinance amending Section eight dash eight dash ten of Chapter eight dash eight of Title eight of the Rochester Code of Ordinances relating to juvenile curfew. Item J five, an ordinance amending Sections two dash eighteen dash one and two dash eighteen dash four of Chapter two dash eighteen of Title two of the Rochester Code of Ordinances relating to downtown special service district.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Spindler-Craig. We don't have any tabled items. I will turn other business over to Mr. Palmer.
Okay. Do we have anybody with other business? Okay. What's your first item?
All right. So thank you so much. I just had a few things. I added some stuff to other business because of things that came up in reports and a couple of public comment. I, I had a question, just for clarification. There has been a lot of talk about supporting our Rochester Airport, and there, to my, and please correct me, to my knowledge, it is, it's expected for council members to fly out and for city staff to fly out, may people to fly out of Rochester Public Airport to support that, this entity. However, when I did, well, actually, someone I knew picked up the, the Japan pamphlet for the mayor. It does say that that trip goes out of not our Rochester Public Airport, but flies out of Minneapolis. This is, to my knowledge, a sister, you know, this is a Rochester-sponsored program, and to have people have their program pre-planned to not use at all our, our airport is an interesting concept. When I asked that of the mayor's office, it was because, I believe, of price-wise, to, because other people are going to be, individuals are going to be paying for the ticket, so wanted it to be discounted. But I would like just some clarification on why. And I, I'm, I'm not sure about the Germany trip, but I can speak on the pamphlet of, the mayor's pamphlet of Japan. So I just, that was my first question. I have several other businesses, but I just wanted to clarify, why is this flown out of Minneapolis when council and staff are told to do a fly out of?
Well, I, I believe that you're, you answered your own question. You said that it was because of price. So what's your second item?
So if, if that is the reason-
The answer to the question is price, and that is an item that's on, on the ability to do that. So let's move on to-
Then why, okay, then my, my second question on that-
No, no, no.
Why wouldn't taxpayers' dollars who are spent for council to fly out, why don't we not use price to have a lower fare so taxpayers pay less money for their council members and staff, city staff to fly out of Minneapolis?
Okay, we, we answered the question. Now let's move on to your second question. What is your second question?
That was my second question. Why? Why do we require our staff and elected officials-
Then we're done? Is any other business any way happen?
Can someone answer that question about why it's-
The questions have been answered for the last time.
Okay.
Based on price. And in the-
Could you please-
In the policy is very clear on how we do flying out of the Rochester Airport. And there's exceptions to that, and you're well aware of them.
I am not. Please do not assume my, my knowledge base. I am not. Please help me understand why it is one reason for this pamphlet to fly out of the Minneapolis Airport, and another reason why taxpayer dollars have to pay for more expensive to get-
For the third, in final time, it's the price. If you want to change the subject, we can move ahead. If you don't want to change the subject, we can adjourn.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes?
Maybe I could add a little to that. I used to lead trips and would take as many as 55 people to Germany or Israel or Italy. And those planes are not big enough to handle groups of 55.
Thank you. So what is your next item?
Could perhaps the mayor speak on this? Because it's her-
No, the mayor does not need to speak on it. Do you want to go to the next item, or would you like to adjourn?
Answer for herself instead of you answer for her? Councilmember Palmer?
We have a motion to adjourn.
That is not, no, I have other business to cover.
No, you don't.
I believe this is just a blatant, you know, attacks that targeted to me. I don't know, I don't know.
Point of order, point of order, Mr. President.
Appreciate this.
Councilmember Dennis, point of order. Mr. President, are you moving on to the next topic?
Well, she won't, so that I guess I'm asking, does the council want to adjourn or not? Okay, go on to your next subject.
I appreciate not adjourning and-
Go on to the next subject, please.
Well, no need to raise your voice, Councilmember Palmer.
Oh, you're not listening.
I appreciate not the condescending remarks. I would like to be treated with respect. I don't know why Councilman, Council President Carlson left. Maybe others know. But this, this is-
Point of order.
Not respectful.
Point of order.
I'm addressing, what council rules is breaking that, that tax, this is a council rule.
City Attorney has the floor.
I, I'd like to understand what other business actually means. Like, what, what, what are we doing here? If, is this city business?
Yes, this was a-
So what, what's the resolution? I mean, to me, other business is asking staff for clarification on ongoing city business that appears in the packet either now or in the future. This is not one of those. So where is the business?
It's, it's protecting taxpayer dollars and a question from a constituent. And I believe other business is other business, it is other business.
That, this is opinion. If there is already in the rules, exceptions, what else is there to talk about?
What is your definition? I, I would like, that would be a good question to ask for other business. What is the definition of a business if it's not other business?
But it's not a mini-meeting. It, it, this is not, you know, this is not-
This was some-
Councilmember Dennis's mini-meeting.
This was an issue brought up-
That is what they are.
At this meeting, it was brought up by President, by the mayor.
You don't have the floor.
I'm so sorry.
Mr. Bransford has the floor. Go ahead, Mr. Bransford.
So I, I just want to understand, what is the business? The business is city business, which is ongoing issues, projects, things that are germane to what have been in the packet or what would be in the packet in the future. But there is, there's no guardrails here on other business.
Yeah.
However, I don't understand how this, I mean, what resolution are you looking for other than someone's opinion?
Thank you, Mr. Bransford. Anybody else have any questions on this subject?
My, my question-
No, you don't have the floor.
Again, I, I think, I think we've had enough discussion on the clarifying question about the airport. If there is other business, I'd like to see her move on to that. If it goes back to that again, I'll have to decide what to do.
I would like to address the comment, which I have the ability to address the comment. This was an issue brought up today at the meeting in the mayor's report. This issue was literally brought up at this meeting.
All right. So again, from my perspective, we answered that. Kind of Council, Acting President Palmer acted. I'll, I'll move to adjourn if we can't move on from it.
Do we have a second to adjourn? Okay, you want to go to another subject, Ms. Dennis?
Yes, please. I would like that. Thank you so much.
Well, then let's move along.
I will, there has been several situations I would like clarification on, one being that there was a violation of Rule three C. I, in order to not violate rules, I would like to have a better understanding of how bringing up germane topics during a issue at a council meeting is a violation of council rules and procedures. Because if I don't understand, if people don't understand what is violations of the rules and procedures, which I believe is being weaponized, how can we not break the rules if we don't have an understanding? So I would like to know on the October seventh meeting, for the reason I was kicked out of the meeting for bringing up a very germane DMC budget issue for the operating DMC budget issue.
Point of order, Council President.
Acknowledge your-
Yes.
You can't-
Go ahead.
Just saying that something is germane does not make it germane. We, we can't rehash something from October seventh. That, this is not an action that was taken by the council. There's no vote. There's nothing to rehash. It was a decision that was made by the council president within her duties, and it is a non-issue.
Okay, thank you.
So just to-
No, no. Mr. Wall?
And I believe that the clerk also sent a very good email that helped to clarify the specific issue about other business and a, a behavior that would not be appropriate to the dais.
Thank you. So you want to move on?
Perhaps I will need more clarification.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
I will reach out.
Council President.
I will reach out to other people.
I will, I will clarify it. Our rules, city council rules, are enforced by the city council. Once the president of the city council makes a ruling, unless, and I believe you've done this in the past, asks for a, a vote, then it, it's the rules that we follow. It's nobody else's rules. So you can move on to the next subject.
Okay.
Well, Kelly Ray had her hand up.
Kelly Ray?
Thank you. Thank you. No problem.
Kirkpatrick, I'm sorry.
Good job. You got it right. Thank you. I just want to suggest that Ms. Dennis, it seems that three C is a concern as it's been brought up, I believe, more than once, not just October seventh. I don't believe we need to clarify that for you. We certainly could, but perhaps what needs to happen is that you have a discussion with the city clerk, who is most knowledgeable about the rules that we have, or perhaps the attorney or city administration, to clarify. I believe that most of the rules within our council code of conduct are not subjective, and they are clear. If any one of us has a concern about the subjectivity or objectivity of said rules, we should be bringing that up to the folks that have documented that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So would you like to move on to the next subject?
Well, I would like to respond to that comment. I would-
I, I wasn't asking a question. I was making a-
But I am allowed to respond to misinformation that I believe, that I believe needs clarification. I have talked to several previous elected officials, and to their knowledge and to my knowledge, how I've been treated has not happened before on the dais.
Point of order, point of order, Mr. President.
Thank you. Go ahead, City Attorney.
To the extent that this is inviting comment by a council member, the council as a whole, as to the treatment of Councilmember Dennis, it's just frankly too closely tied to pending litigation and should not be-
This has nothing to do with-
Should not be entertained.
Okay.
This has nothing to do with any litigation. This is-
Ms. Dennis, you don't have the floor.
That's misinformation's being spread.
No, it's not.
It absolutely is. This has nothing to do with litigation. This is to do with what has been happening in the last few meetings-
Ms. Dennis, you don't have the-
That has been targeted and-
Ms. Dennis, you don't have the floor. And I'm ruling that the city attorney is correct, and move on. What's your next subject?
Okay. Well, I do am glad that these are recorded.
And so am I. So move on. What's the next one?
I had, what I brought up, which there's, I just want to say, I appreciate, I want to make a comment. I appreciate the city administrator for using quotations for the first time when, when updating the council, when, when she brings what is being polled for the consent agenda. This is the time where she's actually used quotations, and that, I believe, had, will, if this is the first time for this first meeting, but will eliminate some of the incredible distortion of intent and narrative-
Point of order, Mr. President.
So I, I just want to say, thank you.
Ms. Dennis, you don't have the floor. City Attorney, go ahead.
And also, Councilmember Wall, I think he was ready to speak up.
Mr. Wall?
To accuse staff or other council members of intentional distortion is against Rules three C. I move we adjourn.
I'm not, I'm not accusing-
A second?
I am not accusing.
First and the second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passes five to one. Thank you.